And they also received a last minute letter from Richard Ardillo, Villanova Town Supervisor, which we will read into the record. This is the first time everybody's seen it. This is Chautauqua County Planning Board, Chautauqua County Department of Planning and Economic Development. Dear members of the County Planning Board, Please propose amendments to the Ball Hill Wind Energy Project. I would like to thank you for your time today and for your work you do every day to help the citizens of our county. One of the issues that you have in front of them today are the modifications that RES has proposed for the Ball Hill Wind Project. This project was approved almost two years ago by our town board. It was the last one in New York State that didn't fall under the new Article ten. As our state government tries to wipe out home rule, we strongly believe in home rule in this county. As such, I ask you to keep in mind that this isn't about whether or not we have a wind farm in Villanova. It has already been approved. This is about changing the height of the towers and about our town having the ability to make our own decisions. It cannot be overstated how important this facility would be to supporting agriculture in our community, the overwhelming economic activity in our town. I urge you to support agriculture in Villanova by supporting this project. Thank you for your time and your service to our community. Respectively, Richard Ardillo, Villanova Town Supervisor. Okay, I will now open it up to members of the floor. If anybody who would like to speak, you can go up to the podium in the back. I'm not sure the microphone is turned on.
Should I sit at that one?
Or just talk? You can stand.
I'm Angelo Brasiello, Forestville, New York. I want to talk about that, this whole wind project and the wind tower being bigger. Our Villanova Board is made up of four councilmen and a superintendent. And out of those councilmen, you have two of them. One of them is getting a tower which procures itself. One of them, which will be voting, will be, his in-laws are getting a tower. And another one, he has got a cousin that's also getting a tower. You have one that isn't involved in any of it, but I cannot see that there's...
There is not a conflict of interest where they would point to even consider the massive precedent this is going to set to go from 599 to 600 feet, or 500 to 600 feet. Now, these towers, at 500 feet, they can't sell the project because they're not green. It's all about the money that's coming in, and they can't sell it. So they feel that if they went to put this bigger one up, that they've got a better chance to go on the market and sell this project. Well, why should the people that are opposed to this project put themselves, get themselves into health issues or property cost issues and even have to look at these things when they can't sell them in the first place? Now, why are we going to set a precedent which not only is going to risk Villanova, but this is going to go through Chautauqua County and all the way through New York State? Because there is nothing in New York State that's nowhere near that big. And why should we be the first guinea pigs to have something so close to our house? The biggest ones up in Maine, they got like a 2,500-foot setback where they're still putting them 1,200 feet next to the house and these things are 600 feet. I think this is crazy to even think about something so big being suggested when they can't even sell what they already have that they were already approved for. And I cannot see how they can even have a fair chance of voting when you already got two people that have relatives that are getting money for it. And when, like yesterday, you have a, we had, there was a, what do you call that? A media, it's a public hearing at Hanover. Right at Hanover, you have the board members from Villanova taking pictures with the wind company the minute they walk in, totally not even considering their constituents that voted for them and put them in office. And I want to know what is the councilman's job when they get into office? Because when I was a councilman, I thought that the majority of the people is what your job is. Now, these people are going for, they've been pals with the wind company since they started here. And the wind company's lawyer, our lawyer, is paid for by the wind company, along with Arcrite's lawyers paid for by the wind company, along with Casadega's lawyers paid for by the wind company. It's all the same guy.
Okay, thank you.
So, all right.
Thank you. Okay, come on down.
Good afternoon, Tina Brasiello. I live on West Road in Forestville, it's the town of Villanova.
Can't hear.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure. I can yell it out. Tina Brasiello. Oh, okay. Please do not approve this height increase. This project was already approved for 500-foot setbacks, for 500-foot with setbacks that are dangerously too close to humans at 1,200 feet. Turbines that can be another 100-foot taller will be devastating to anyone that lives even a mile away, and they're keeping the same short setbacks of a mere 1,000 to 1,200 feet. We all know the wind lawyer for this board. He is paid for by the company, RES. RES makes a deposit into Villanova and Hanover's bank account, and they pay his salary. This is a courtesy from Big Wind. He makes up the setbacks and leads the boards to agree. He also led the Arcrite Board down the same short path. After seeing the negative health impacts, many states and communities are requiring setbacks of two miles or more. It is also well-known that these turbines hold hundreds of gallons of oil, which often leak and burn. Oil will then be in our water table, too. Everyone in this area and well beyond will be impacted. You cannot hide a moving skyscraper that is taller than any building in Buffalo or many cities. Already, at least 15 homes in Arcrite in close proximity are up for sale. People are leaving. They are worried about their health and their biggest asset, their home. Property values are plummeting. We didn't come here and stay here to live with skyscrapers standing over us. Many more will leave, especially if these wind companies keep asking for bigger and higher. Our health is in danger from the infrasound, noise, shadow flicker, and the fact that Starflight will no longer have a clear path to our area. Tourism to Chautauqua County will not exist. We are known for our beauty and peacefulness. Fill the views with these 599-foot industrial wind turbines, and the people will avoid this area like the plague. If residents are already leaving Arcrite, tourists will not tolerate an area where there has been mass destruction to wildlife habitat and areas that are used for camping and hiking. If this height increase is approved, it will set a precedent for upcoming projects. This area will suffer beyond repair, 78-foot bases. This is a footprint that will forever scar our home. This has been such a rush job. Why is Villanova voting tonight and their partner township, Hanover, has no idea when they're voting? This all appears to be exclusive. The wind company has been around, has not been around for over 18 months, and then they show up at the Villanova Board meeting on 6/13 requesting this increase to the wind law. This time notices were sent to taxpayers for the public hearing on 6/26. Opposition was strong and outnumbered those in favor. Finally, the majority of the residents were notified, and the majority were opposed. The following Friday, the 29th, was a Villanova Planning Board meeting. Many residents were in attendance. The lawyer told the chairman, no comments. We were not allowed to speak. We were not allowed to share information with the two people that were in the planning board. That's all there is in our planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else I speak? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Joni Riggle, and I sent emails out. I don't know if you received them, so you read them.
Speak up just a little bit so I can move them back in here.
So I won't repeat everything, but I'm very concerned. You have to ask yourself, why did not, why RES did not disclose the fact that these are unprecedented, untested turbines? They're for offshore. They're located four miles offshore of Block Island, Rhode Island. The New York State Public Service wants to put them 30 miles offshore of Long Island off of Montauk, but RES wants to put them 1,000 feet, you know, from residents who are 1,200. And I won't reiterate what Tina said, but I totally agree with everything. We've researched this for at least a year, all over the world. They're calling for much greater setbacks. Deandresko was a doctor that worked for the, he's a noise engineer, worked for the DEC, Public Service Commission for over 20 years. He said, he testified to NYSERDA that infrasound from these turbines penetrates your walls. It is not blocked by your walls. It reverberates, it actually reverberates in your home and in our tissues, in our body tissues. We all have different frequencies of our organs. I'm a nurse, so I've studied this. I'm very concerned. My vested interest is public health, not money. Public health, the amenity, what's it worth? If you look at these turbines, the PNIA's, the pre-construction noise assessment, there's at least hundreds, like 600 to 1,000 sensitive receptors. I don't want to be a sensitive receptor. I don't think anybody should be a sensitive receptor for big LLCs that can make money. Low frequency, they say, oh, these taller turbines will not cause more noise. Maybe not as much audible, but here's a study I'd like to leave with all of you on low-frequency noise from these turbines. It's proven that the low-frequency component of these turbines, the larger they get, the more low-frequency, and that's what causes the most complaints and annoyance, amplitude modulation. Like I said, it's not blocked by walls. I don't know why RES didn't remodel this. I think they should do another supplemental environmental impact statement. If you looked online and saw it, it's a joke. They didn't model any of the lower frequencies. I think it's public victims of this project that we should be able to see the modeled frequencies down to .1 Hz, which is the nauseogenic frequency. I just can't say how, I just think it's terrible. What kind of a world? I mean, what's the money? We may do without this windfall. I know you probably are banking on it because this is approved, but if you go 100 feet taller, they didn't do any studies on TV interference, cellphone interference. It's not there. If you look, nothing is there, none of the modeling. We don't know the impacts to the soil. One thing with agriculture, you're talking about benefits to agriculture. Did you know in China, they have a lot of large wind farms? They've done studies there, and they have found that these wind projects, even in Texas, cause a microclimate change, increased temperature, decreased rainfall, soil drying out. There's a lot of unknowns because we don't know. But what about the grape belt? You know, are we going to harm our crops? But please vote no.
Thank you. Anybody? Yes, sir.
Members of the planning board, my name is Aaron Sakin, and my firm is special counsel to the boards for the town of Villanova and the town of Hanover. I'm going to be very brief, and I just wanted to say, first and foremost, to echo some of what Supervisor Ardillo wrote in his letter, which is to thank you very much for your time and your service and your attention to this issue, which I know is significant. This board has spent a lot of time over the years taking a look at this project overall. And I would just simply reiterate what I know many of you already know, appreciate, and understand, which is what's before both of those town boards at the moment, obviously, is not to reassess, you know, whether there is going to be a wind farm project, but rather the effects and the marginal impacts of the difference between what has already been approved, you know, by this body and by the town boards. And that's the differential between what was approved and what's being requested, some of the changes that are being requested. And I know that Bark from RES is probably going to address that and answer your questions more specifically about the merits. I'm really here only to emphasize procedurally, obviously, what's before the board and the hope of the boards that however they determine this, whatever they decide about the impacts, that that would be a decision Supervisor Ardillo referenced that could be made by the local bodies and that this board would support whatever position it is that they came to. So thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing that, come on down.
My name is Kathy McGraw, 744 Bartlett Hill Road in South Dayton. My residence is not a farm, it's a residence. I am going to have a turbine. I am not participating in this project. I'm going to have a turbine that is 1,500 feet away from my home. It's now, they want to put 100 feet higher. They do not want to move the setback. So 1,500 feet, and I'm going, it's going to be 100-foot height. My three concerns are safety, that is a big one. I'm concerned about the bigger heights, the taller tower. I'm worried about turbine collapse. I'm worried about fire. I'm worried about blade throw, ice throw. I'm worried about health, fibroacoustic diseases. The nurse already mentioned everything that could happen there. I am very, very worried about that. And the last thing I'm worried about is my property value. Because all I know is that wherever I've seen turbines, and I've been to wind farms all over the world. I have been to Holland, I've been everywhere, and I've seen them. They are far away from residents. I've never seen anything this close. So, I'm nervous. I ask you to help us, help this community. These wind companies come in like a plague of locusts, and they destroy communities. It's neighbors against neighbors up there. And then they leave and they move on to the next community to destroy. I'm asking you for your help. We are not farmers. We're just, we just love living up there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
My name is John Conway. Do I get to say my address? I'm from St. Clairville. I'll be into Casadega Wind Project. Alls I got to do and say is, we live out here for a reason. It's because of the natural beauty and not to see skyscrapers. And we're not all farmers, and the majority of the residents aren't farmers. And it should be thought about as a whole, not just as a minority. It should be the majority of the people that don't want this. Because it's like destroying property values, destroying our views. 18 months of construction and destruction. I'll have them within 1,500 feet of my house. At 1,800 feet, I'll see probably four to six of them. I already see Arcrites, and miles away you see them. It's just something we didn't need in this area. I mean, yeah, it's going to bring in some money, but is that money worth the division of these townships, the boards, the residents? You've got people fighting at these meetings because they're saying, you're getting something we're not. Well, I don't care what you're getting. It's just, we don't want to see this. We don't want to destroy what we have here. It needs to be kept in the city. This electric isn't even for up here. We already have no problems with electric here. It's just destroying the communities there, and you need to think about that. RES comes in here, puts their stuff in here, and they leave. They don't care. It's a quick sale for them. It's big bucks in their pocket, a little bit of money for the townships, some money for the county. But at what cost? That's what you've got to really think about, the morality, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Okay, see nobody come forward?
One more.
I'm sorry.
Karen Engstrom. The net economic impact will be negative. The net economic impact will be negative. The impact on the environment will be negative. The RES representative said, we want a bigger, taller turbine to improve the economics. Does that mean their money, the money that they will make? That's right. It means the money they will make, the economics to be improved. But have they said they will increase the amount of money they'll pay the community? They have not. They have changed the spec, you know, the specifics for this, and they have made it very difficult for people to deal with because they've done it on such a short timeframe. The economics will come back, and we will see that the negative impact. The other thing that they're not doing, they're extorting from this poor community. They're saying, if you give us 100 more feet, we will put the wires underground. That's an extortion. They should be putting the cables, that's what he'll say later, we're going to do this wonderful thing and put the cables underground, if you will give us, grant us the 600. This kind of business ethic is not ethical. When you say 600 feet and 599, if you want to put it that way, and you say this plan is already agreed upon. The RES representative stated last night that if it doesn't get granted at 600 feet, the project will not go forward. So you really are able to affect this. This can be stopped. If this project doesn't get what they want and the money they want, in the timeframe they want, your recommendation saying no can effectively stop it if the town board respects your consideration of this important thing. I'd like to read you something from the Chautauqua County 2020 Comprehensive Plan, something many of you were involved in. Quote, "In our vision of the future, Chautauqua County's natural, cultural, and recreational resources, rural character, and other assets are the foundation of its exceptional quality of life and economic prosperity. The Chautauqua name is recognized far and wide as a premier place to visit, learn, conduct business, and be proud to call home." If you change, if this town makes a decision to change the entire aspect of our rural, pristine community, it will definitely have a very negative effect on our quality of life, our health, our environment, and most of all, the economics. Because the economics involve, as people have said, loss of property values, loss of tourism, loss of agricultural income, cost of replacement for the radio and television and cell tower equipment that's already being interrupted by the ones that are up. That's our police...
Okay, ma'am, time's up. Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, hearing that, we will move on. 2018-52 and 2018-57, Ball Hill Wind Energy Project in the towns of Villanova and Hanover. Proposed amendments to local laws regulating height and setback requirements for WECs, modifications of wind overlay districts, and amended special use permits for wind energy project. Okay, who, a representative for the project can come and describe the intent?
Thank you, members of the board. Again, we received permits for this project in 2016 when we proposed 29 turbine locations in the towns of Villanova and Hanover and did a full secret process and environmental impact statement. Almost immediately after we got our permits, a new turbine upgrade became available. So we looked at the potential for utilizing that turbine to increase the energy production at the same permitted locations. And it turned out to allow for a significant increase in energy production with the same capacity installed and at the same locations. At the same time, we began to study the feasibility of undergrounding the 5.8-mile overhead 115-kV interconnect with the national grid system. And our engineers determined that that was feasible. And so we looked at both of those improvements to the project and have come back to the town requesting permission to modify our special use permit and the local laws to allow an increase in height to accommodate that turbine and a commensurate increase in the minimum setbacks to ensure safety with a higher turbine. So as part of our application, we did a full environmental assessment form that studied all the marginal impacts associated with these modifications. And that FEAF and the applications were both reviewed and heavily commented on by the town's independent engineer and revised in accordance with their wishes and deemed complete. So a full range of impacts has been studied. Obviously, you know, one of the chief impacts one would want to study when you're proposing to increase the height of the tower is the visual. I brought these posters. I don't know if it's appropriate or if you'd like to see these. These show, is this convenient to cast them around? What's the best way to share these? They show on the top view, the visual simulation that was done to support our 2016 permits with the turbine that was proposed at that time. And the lower one shows the turbine that we're currently proposing. I mean, it's, our picture's worth a thousand words. I can't characterize or draw conclusions for you as to what visual difference you think that makes. Surely, there's some difference. I would suggest that it's not significant. We've also studied the differential sound impacts of the project. We did a revision of our sound assessment, and it turns out that this project is by and large a quieter project than the originally proposed project. And that's probably because it uses the same generator, the same equipment, and it's simply higher in the air. But of 769 receptor points, 750 of them were either quieter or the same sound level as previously. And at 19 of them, the sound level increased one to two decibels, which is acoustically difficult to hear. And the project continues to comply with all town noise standards and the DEC standard for difference in ambient sound level. We also looked at impacts on wetlands and tree clearing. And because, largely because of the undergrounding of the transmission line and the elimination of the southern substation, ground disturbance and tree clearing impacts are reduced by over 10 acres. Wetland impacts are reduced by over three acres. We looked at impacts on avian species, and it was determined that there would be no difference in the avian impacts of this turbine versus the other. It's slightly different because it's higher in the air. It's slightly bigger rotor area, but it still falls within the estimated mortality ranges that were made for the original application for both birds and bats. In parallel, we have been discussing our wetlands permit and our Article 11 permit with the DEC in Albany. And we have been discussing a bat mitigation package that includes curtailment of the wind farm at low wind speeds. When bats are expected to be active in the area. So we will have a curtailment imposed on the project to protect the bats, and we're doing a bat habitat protection program to ensure a net benefit to bat species in the state. In terms of communication signals, we did a sweep of four communication signals to support the original application in 2016. And we consulted with the expert who did that, Tom Search. And they determined that this change of technology would not change their conclusion about the lack of impacts. They did encourage us to continue to monitor that over time, which we would do in any case. But the change in technology in itself, they concluded, would not have any impacts on communication signals. Trying to think what other major impact areas we looked at. But if you have any questions, yes, sir?
A couple. I heard some of the presenters state that the project would not go forward if this additional height was not approved. I also heard somebody state that if it went forward... forward, which would seem in conflict with the first statement, that if it went forward, unless the additional height was approved, the lines would not be buried. I'd like your response to both of those.
Yes. There's no assurance about the project moving forward in any case. I mean, it's a very competitive market. We're, the prices for energy and the auctions that we're looking at continue to drop. And so all I can say on that score is, I don't know that the project wouldn't work without it, but I know that the improvement of roughly a 16% increase in energy output would be expected, would greatly help the economic viability of the project. So we want to give it every chance that we can.
How about burying the lines if it was smaller height?
Well, taken in itself, burying lines is more expensive than putting them overhead.
True.
And we're offering it as a mitigation that we think would be appealing to the towns. And frankly, we can't afford to incur any extra cost without some extra benefit. Yes, sir?
A couple of years ago, there was a great deal of discussion about the impact of the height of the blades in relationship to the airport.
Yes.
I did not hear any assurance that you're still within FAA guidelines and there's not a problem with any of the approaches to the airport.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. In fact, we did go back to the FAA and get, and refile at 599 feet. And they cleared all turbine locations except two at 599 feet. One of them, they reduced to 567, which is roughly the actual height of the turbine that we're proposing, 568. And we'll obviously have to accommodate that foot in height. And the other turbine was reduced from 599, I believe, to 587.
So you have done this in response to FAA?
Yes, sir, we have. And all the determinations of no hazard are included in the application.
Do the turbines have to be lit?
They do. They, at 492 feet, 22 of the 29 turbines were going to be lit now, all 29. So an additional seven turbines will be lit.
Just a quick question to clarify. A little earlier, when you mentioned the height of these, the newly proposed towers, you said 568. And in the first few pages of the application, the introduction says 586. I'm not sure if that's a typo or what that discrepancy could be.
That's a typo.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it would be the 568?
It's 568.
Okay.
Yeah. It is 5, I'm sorry, the V136, I'm going to do the math now just to be sure.
Sure.
The V136, it means that it's 136 meter rotor diameter. So if we take half of that, that's 68 meters, plus the tower height of 105 meters, is 173 meters times 3.28. So-
Okay.
Checking on that.
Come on, can't you do that in your head?
One of the other concerns-
568.
Yeah, 568.
Yes.
One of the other concerns of the public in the speaking portion was a negative economic impact. And the lady was not very specific as far as the profitability, and I assume we're talking about here. If you do not have the 599-feet blade, is the project profitable?
It's not as profitable. It's, obviously, the profitability will ultimately be determined by the price that we can get for our power. And that's determined by a competitive auction process that we have not concluded yet. Just by way of background, selling energy from a wind farm disassociated from the REX is a very challenging proposition. The utilities in New York State are not required to buy the power, and they don't run auctions for it. So we do have a REX contract with NYSERTA. But our challenge is to sell the energy from the project in a highly competitive market. I don't know what the clearing price that we will get for the energy. That will be the major factor in determining the profitability of it. But again, we're compelled to give it every benefit we can, to reduce costs to the extent we can, which tend to be high in New York. The use of union labor, the development costs. We have over 80 landowners. The payments to landowners annually will exceed $600,000. We have costs associated with bat mitigation. We have costs associated with wetlands mitigation. So the costs are significant. And really, the only variable that we have any control over, again, at these permitted locations, is to maximize our energy production with marginal difference in impacts. So I think, the answer to your question, I think, is that this will certainly improve, all other things being equal, this will certainly improve the economic viability of the project and give it a much better probability of being successful. It will, at the same time, increase royalty payments to the landowners because they are based on the energy that we create. So that's, so they'll benefit from that increase in energy as well.
Both the towns as well? Their royalty, or how does that work?
No, the town host community payment and the pilot payment aren't based on energy produced. They're based on capacity installed, which will not change.
What are those?
It's 100 megawatts total, 3.45 megawatts per turbine.
The pilot host fee that you're going to pay to the hosting towns?
The host, the host community agreement fee is $3,800 a megawatt. And we had that discussion around the negotiation of those fees. And, you know, it's great to have your payment based on energy when energy production is high. But that's not always the case. So the municipalities and the I D A, you know, made the decision that we'd rather have a shore payment regardless of whether the wind blows or not, regardless of the energy production. So those payments are based on installed capacity, which will not change.
In one of the letters from Concerned Citizens we received, it was mentioned that there was a private airstrip that if it goes up to the increased height, they will no longer be able to utilize. Were you aware of that? And if so, has there been any mitigation measures to deal with that?
I'm aware of one private airstrip that was proximate to our overhead 115-kV line. And I don't have the landowner's name at my fingertips, but I can get it to. That's the only private airstrip that I'm aware of. And these improvements would be a benefit to him.
Okay.
Because we're going to underground the line.
Give him a copy of that letter.
I do know that the turbine in question is turbine 24. Okay. Well, I can-
They did place that in their letter to us.
Okay.
It was in the second packet that Michael mailed out today, I believe.
Again, the modifications that we're proposing are a marginal increase of, you know, 100 feet in maximum height. The turbines are already permitted at 492. So whether that additional 100 feet would make-
Cool.
I'll have to take that back and look at it. I don't know that, does it say that the additional 100 feet would make the difference?
Yes.
Take that.
Okay, thanks.
Another question I got is, to me, it feels like a seeker segmentation issue. I know technically it doesn't qualify. However, the seeker segmentation is that you get your seeker review and your approval for a certain project, and you build on part two. Now, this project has been approved. To me, it's almost like your part two is increase in height. Instead of expanding land area, you're expanding airspace. How is it not seeker segmentation?
Because this technology was not available when we applied for and received our permits.
I understand that, but still, it's a change in the scope of the project after an approval has been provided. And like I say, you know, normal segmentation, you're increasing land mass. With a phase two of a project, it wasn't in the original environmental impact statement. I don't know. I don't know the answer to my question. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's obviously a legal opinion that I would need, but it just feels like a seeker segmentation issue.
I mean, I went to Albany Law School, but I'm not a practicing attorney in New York. But, you know, my understanding is segmentation is more or less a deliberate division of the project into pieces to not give the lead agency and agencies the benefit of full review of the original plan.
I don't know about the-
Intent?
Deliberate-
Yeah.
Parameters of it, but-
But I can, all I can tell you is that this, I mean, the wind turbine technology is evolving for the benefit of projects in New York State. Because we have a moderate wind regime, and this, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of marginal from a wind perspective.
Right. I understand.
But I can tell you as an historical fact that this turbine was not available or contemplated at the time that we described and applied for the original project. And it's, since it did become available, we see it as a project improvement along with the undergrounding of the transmission, eliminating of the, of the substation, I suppose, you know, by the same token, one could argue that that's segmentation as well. But we see them as improvements that became available after our permits were received. And we have, we believe we have studied the full scope of impacts associated with those marginal modifications.
I'm thoroughly confused at this point. In the beginning of your presentation, I think you said it was the same generator, only 100 and some feet higher.
Yes.
And now you're telling me it's not the same generator?
It is the same generator. It's, so it's an upgrade of the same generator platform.
Is it upgraded the-
Yeah.
I'm trying to get that in my head.
Everything in the box in the nacelle is the same. It's a Vestas 3.45 gearbox wind generator and associated equipment. That's-
I'm an old Marine. I need a simple answer.
Okay.
Is it the same generator or is it not the same generator?
It's the same generator.
Thank you.
The tower is taller and the blades are longer. It's the same generator.
The longer blades with the wider blades allows more rapid wind speed there for the generator to generate more.
Okay. One more question then.
Yes, sir.
Are the blades different now?
Yes. They're longer.
Longer and wider.
The young lady has a question.
And the max 599 feet is the top of the blade extended. Is that-
Yes, the top of the blade tip length's vertically extended.
Other question. I know, I know the answer to this, but it seems like one of the other big concerns of the residents is the setbacks. Clearly, I know the answer. Bigger setbacks, less turbines, less efficient, less cash flow. But I guess, just for the record, I still have to ask you, is there any ability to increase the setbacks?
Not in these locations. But on the other hand, we believe that the setbacks are adequate for safety concerns. And then, I mean, it's, it happens that in other wind projects, setbacks are larger and distances are greater. But we believe that these setbacks are adequate for safety. And obviously, we've studied the noise impacts associated with proximity to the wind turbines. It's the full height of the turbine from a public road and from a, from a non-participating property line, and it's at least twice that from every home. So we think that that is adequate.
Is that setback measured from the house to the tower or from the house to the blade?
Yes, it is. From the house to the tower.
So on 136-meter tower, then the radius is going to be 68 meters or approximately 200 feet of the setback?
It can be if it were in line, yes.
Sir?
Smith?
So what happens to the project if you don't get the variance to increase the height of the turbines?
I can't say for sure. But I, but I, but I, I think it's logical to conclude that the chances of success are not as good in the marketplace. They're certainly improved with an increase in, 16% increase in energy production.
Okay, you know, I, I kind of look at this in the viewpoint of the area variance. Because essentially, you want to go higher than what the current zoning allows. So you're asking for a variance. I don't, you're asking for them to change the zoning so it won't be a variance. But if it's, you review, the zoning board is review an area variance for whatever it may be, the setback, whatever it may be. You usually try to shoot for and approve the limited amount of, or minimum amount of change that would still work. Is there a lower height than this that would still work without going to the full 599?
Unlikely. I mean, again, I can't say for sure. I can tell you that at 492, we have not succeeded in gaining a contract to sell the power. I mean, that speaks for itself. Beyond that, it's confidential. But it has not been economically successful to date at 492.
Okay, have, in the initial D E I S, you know, there was, you know, 18, 21 pages, however, number of pages, that dealt with the cumulative impact of the project and the other projects that are occurring in the area. You know, you got the Arcrite spot done, this one that's been approved at the current height allowance, and the Casadega project that's going to be reviewed through the Article 10 process with the state when it, if it gets, when it, if it gets to that point. Now, you referred to the original D E I S in the seeker and the environmental that you presented for the zoning change. And there was just a quick blurb on cumulative impacts. Now, you're referring to a D E I S that was developed 2008. It referenced documents and scientific evidence from 2006. Now, that information's a decade old already.
But that was thoroughly revised and updated in 2016.
I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, supplemental, supplemental D E I S was done in 2016. Yeah.
Okay. And was that updated with the cumulative impact with the increasing the height, the extra 104 feet?
That aspect of it was updated in this 2018 application. Yes?
Okay, that's the blurb.
Are you willing to share any of that increase in margin, that 16% leaves the host communities and the leaseholders?
Well, the 16% increase would be shared with the property owners. Because they're based on generating-
Oh, yeah.
But the violation of the community is based on installed backgrounds.
But the towns would not, the host communities would not?
Well, at least in presentations, there's pros and cons to that. Because the town may choose to get a fixed cash flow and know what it's going to be rather than based on wind production or the markets.
There are projects in the state that have used older technology that don't generate as much as they expected. And the towns and the I D As still get the money in the agreements. And that was one of the chief concerns.
During your presentation, we'll go to wildlife. You mentioned the bats and bird study. And I did go back and look at the 2008 and the 16, and saw that they're actually, according to the language in the current seeker, there wasn't- according to the language in the current SEAKER, there was an increase in mortality. And I think I go to Doug's point, with the increase in the mortality, although it falls within the standards, we, you will be, if successful, potentially the second built project within our county. We already have one under construction and we have another one close to the end of the Article 10 process. So I think the cumulative impact on this particular area, that there was some question about, you know, overall bat population and the size of that impact on a bat population and the ability for that to recover in a speedy way. I guess I'm kind of concerned about that and also trying to think, well, you know, you're, the SEAKER referenced that you're in negotiation with the DEC over mitigation plan, but it's, at this point, it's not, doesn't indicate that it's approved.
Well, it's final, but it's not public yet. Yeah. We've been advised that there's a draft permit in hand and literally all we need to do is deliver the contract with the vendor that's going to install a gate at a cave that has that.
So that's the habitat plan, is there any other mitigation plan that's...
No, but that's, that's the plan that was, that was suggested and improved by the DEC staff. Which in their calculus will yield a net benefit to bat populations in the state.
Well, in some ways, I feel like you've been on the hot seat for a little while here, but Aaron, you've had it kind of comfortable back there. The real issue that we have before us is not simply, like he's, like Mark indicated, the project has been approved at the local level. What we are considering as a county planning board, what you have before you is whether there should be a change in this law which will impact the project. Or if the law is changed, the project will impact the town. So it is important that we hear about this, but I think there's probably some questions we have about your proposal in particular.
Sure, happy to address them as best I can, please.
And I think it's indicated by several questions from the board members here and by items that were sent in to us in the form of letters, the setback is one of the large concerns. The original law that was drafted by your firm, I believe, the added height limitation of 400 feet originally, had a thousand foot setback?
From the dwellings.
From the dwellings.
That's correct.
So that would have equated at two and a half times the height of the tower?
Yes, that's correct.
The law went to 499, then the setback stayed at 1,000. The law is proposed at 599, the setback has stayed at 1,000. Can you provide me the scientific basis for the conclusion that you as a firm utilized to reach the thousands?
I can probably make you a more detailed submission. I have not worked on all aspects of the project, so I'm probably not prepared to speak to you scientifically. I do know at least, speaking from a comfort level of what the board has asked, the distance that the turbines, if, the towers, if they're higher, would be from the roadways, from the properties and from the residences, didn't, at least at this point, cause any discomfort or pause, but I will certainly follow up with you and the board if there's anything that you would need. But the short answer to your question is I don't know.
My concern is that, I know many other places across the nation, from a fall down perspective, have chosen 1.5 as kind of a standard for tower height, but these are moving objects and there's more than fall down involved with them. So I was just looking at something that assures that this wasn't just an arbitrary number and perhaps should have been considered for change.
No, that's not the case, and I'd be happy to send the board more detailed information if needed.
If the, I know our 30-day window expires 8...
On the 15th.
15th? Would there be, do you think the board would be willing to give us more time to review?
I don't know.
There would be two boards.
Okay, two boards, correct.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, it's kind of like three dimensional chess to make sure all the planes take off on time, so to speak, if that's what the boards ultimately approve. I think that they had, as everything has been lined up and planned, I think they were hoping and anticipating for some clarity from this body today for a number of reasons, particularly given the season of the year, there are vacations, sometimes there are meetings. I know, I think that there's a significant gap in the time that you meet. So I think the boards were probably expecting a determination.
Okay. Any more questions from the board? Hearing none? Do we have a motion one way or another?
I guess I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know if it's for him or not, but I read all the letters from all the, of all the residents that sent in letters and there was, I think, at least two letters that stated that the planning board meeting, and I'm not sure if that's confused with the regular Villanova board meeting, but the planning board member, when they had the vote, that there was only two members voting. Has that been validated by, I guess, the county planning department? Was that vote valid or not to move? They say they approved it with a vote of two, I guess, the way I understand the...
I'm not aware of any procedural irregularity, so that, I don't think that that's correct. But I...
I think we need to know that.
Yeah, Don is the counsel for the...
For the village?
For the town.
Okay, yeah, he can speak to that.
For the record, I'm Don Mahalik, I'm the town attorney for Villanova.
You know, I'm not lead counsel on this, but as far as the planning board, it's only a three-person board. And shortly before the meeting, I think maybe nine days before the meeting, Jerry Park, for health reasons, resigned. So the entire board was two people.
All right, so the quorum is still...
So the quorum is two. So by resolution from the town board, the planning board has been established as a three-member board?
Yes.
Notified?
Right, it's a three-member board.
Okay.
So they have one vacancy, two members, and the two members unanimously voted to approve.
And why was there no public comment at that meeting allowed? That's what stated in the letters as well, we heard that today as well.
It wasn't a hearing, it was, I don't think the planning board has to allow public comment at their meetings. They, the town set aside, dedicated time, they even moved over to the church because the town hall couldn't accommodate, and they had speakers for hours in there who had, you know, an opportunity, and they made sure they went through the hearing process and everybody had an opportunity. And I believe there was public comment at board meetings as well when this was introduced at the time. And I think the idea is to try to have one centralized public hearing and one repository for the commentary.
Yeah, a board is not required to allow privileges for it. So why they decided not to...
Which is not well-known, even a town board does not have to allow privileges of the floor. They almost always do, but it's not required.
It is open meeting, the public is allowed to attend the meeting, but they are not required to offer privileges for it at a regular meeting. Now, a public hearing, that's different, that's the purpose of a public hearing is to allow comments.
Have people to be heard.
Right.
I think that's a bad, a bad rule.
Well...
I think they should, and especially given this, and I'm disappointed myself that there aren't more officials from the town of Villanova, especially the ones that voted for it, aren't here. I don't see anybody here defending their vote.
Yeah, and I...
Pushing this thing forward. I see letters and a lot of people that certainly going to be affected by it and opposed to it. I don't see anybody here, you know, giving their side stating why this is a good idea for us to approve this.
I had a lengthy conversation with Supervisor Argillo earlier today, and wanted very badly to be here, number one, to thank you for the time and effort you put into this, but number two, to try to allay some of the concerns you may have at a procedural level. He was going to be stuck at work until 4:30, 5 o'clock, and then they've got a meeting tonight that he had to get over to, so he sends his apologies. But that was one of the reasons why he thought it was at least important to try to prepare a letter to deliver to the board with apologies for not being here personally. He had hoped to do so, but wasn't able to.
And you're the attorney for him?
No, I am the attorney for the, for the town.
For the town.
For the town.
Hudson Ross is special counsel for the wind project. And I'm the town attorney, just a general town attorney. So we have both town councils here. A question, is there a vote tonight on this proposal?
I'm sorry, Don, could you speak up?
I'm sorry, is there a vote at this evening's town board meeting on this proposal?
That has not been decided yet. It's possible, and part of it may depend on whether there's guidance from this body today. That's part of sort of the three-dimensional chess I was referring to earlier. But that, quite candidly, that's up to the board. You know, they're going to have a work session, I think at 6 o'clock, and then have a meeting at 7. I know there's been discussion about doing so, but nothing has been decided. And part of it is incumbent, obviously, upon what this body decides and the guidance it gives.
I mean, the topic is on the agenda for tonight, whether they'll take any action. That's up to the board.
Pardon me for, I just want to be clear, you're both representing the town of Villanova right now, or it's one Hanover?
No, I'm the Villanova attorney, I'm not even sure who the Hanover attorney is at the moment, but, no, the...
This gentleman is the Villanova's attorney.
Hudson Ross is special counsel for both towns.
He is the counsel for the wind project.
For the, for the...
For both communities.
But for the towns.
That's correct.
Did we, do we have an acknowledgement that Hanover's planning board approved this too? I mean, we're only talking Villanova, there was two members of the planning board, there was three gentlemen who signed...
Yeah, now, keep in mind, the planning board is a recommended body, they recommended the town board.
Right, it's not really a complete approval.
Sure, but I mean, so if Villanova's doing it, doesn't Hanover have to do the same thing?
That's in progress as well.
Yeah, we've got, we've got for both communities here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just to clarify, these two referrals were received separately, one from Villanova, one from Hanover, essentially enacting the same, you know, amendments to their local laws. So for the most part, any response from the county to these referrals would be, would have the same recommendations or the same, the same decision.
Technically, we will be having two votes, one for the referral from Hanover, one for the referral from Villanova. There are more turbines being located in Villanova, correct? Am I saying that right, in Hanover?
Yes, there's 23 in Villanova.
Pardon me?
23 in Villanova and six in Hanover.
Okay.
Chairman Bowen, if we elect to table this vote tonight, what are the impacts to this request?
Well, we, there would be two options. We would table it and try to hold a second meeting to act on it before the 15th, or we can request that one of the two, two towns give us an extension, an additional three days to review. They don't have to allow us that extra time. If they don't allow us the extra time, we would still have to call a special and meet before the 15th.
I guess the other question is, that's a good question, also what additional information, if a decision was made and we want to do that, what additional information do we gather that would allow us to make a more informed decision?
Well, I mean, like, I would like further opinion on the segmentation issue. Try to retrieve scientific data concerning the setbacks would be another one, you know, and need more clarification in my mind on the cumulative effect of the extra height along with, you know, this project along with the other two projects. You know, because, you know, we've got three projects in the general same area of the county. And it increases, in my mind, the cumulative effect of the projects and this project going increased height. If I'm stumbling, please...
Let me, let me just go to another spot.
Okay.
A little bit away from just a procedural issue. So tonight, absent a response from this body, technically, the board from Villanova, it would be in a procedural era if it voted on the, on the matter before it...
I think it's fair to say it would have to wait.
It would have to wait.
And, you know, Hanover's, whatever schedule it has lined up, would have to wait accordingly as well.
I think Hanover's the fourth Thursday, but I honestly don't know.
But, but we have until Sunday. We also, under 239, have up to two days before the decision hearing. So absent anything that they can do this week, which they can, if we don't respond, they would have to wait until sometime next week and we would have to respond two days before them. Give us a small window to skip.
I understand, I never looked at that, but I understand what you're saying, sure.
I'm trying to understand the potential for this board scheduling a public hearing if we were to table it and getting an answer to both town boards, even without the extension approval. Because there's technically, except for you as counsel, there's no one from the town here to say whether they would grant this board an extension.
Exactly, and we'd have to take that back to the board, if that was the request.
So I think we have a little, a little larger...
Well, I'm going to stick my neck out. Right now, with, I mean, I understand the change in technology, I understand the timing of the availability of the change in technology. That said, I don't like changes occurring mid-project. My personal, just my personal take, take on things. As of right now tonight, if I was to vote myself, I would move to disapprove at this time. Now, keep in mind, with that said, even our disapproval, the board can, with a supermajority vote, override that and move forward with the change. I don't know what the thoughts are from anybody else.
I can tell you my thoughts, just, just like yours, will be more. This was a presentation that should have been more definitive, and it wasn't. If I were to vote tonight, I certainly would not approve this.
And I guess I may not comment before, because I'm not sure what additional information, I hear ideas, Chip, but what additional information we get that would allow me to make a more informed decision. If we're looking for, you know, complex, comprehensive studies realistically in, you know, 72 hours to 100 hours to get, you know, the types of things you talk about, I don't think it's, it's possible. So realistically, at least in my mind, I think I'm comfortable unless the vote is formally taken, I'm not comfortable disclosing what my vote would be, though I have made up my mind. But I don't know that there's additional information that would help me change my mind. I guess I would say, I think I have what I need to make a decision.
I think the one piece, the one piece of information that might come forward that Aaron has indicated is that it's a law firm that is creating a law that you're being asked to vote on to approve or disapprove would demonstrate, they should be able to readily demonstrate how they came up with the thousand foot setback.
Yes, sir. You know, I can tell you, if this wasn't stated before, at least by me and by the representative Mark from RES, that, you know, everything is within, well within, you know, the legal limits. There's certainly no, you know, concern along those lines. I think what you would be asking is to, to essentially provide something that would supplement that, but from a legal standpoint, there's certainly no concern there.
I think when we talk about zoning and health, safety and welfare, if there's an issue of concern about throw or, you know, blade drop or anything like that, falls into that category. So we're into the legal realm.
Sure.
And, and at that point, what we're deciding is, what you're proposing is a legal number of 1,000 feet, does that address the health, safety and welfare component that you're trying to address by having a setback at all?
Was it increased to 1,200? Was it increased to 1,200? Did I hear 1,200 or not?
Well, I'll let Mark speak, but that is the effective distance.
Most of the residents are 1,200.
The setback requirement is 1,000, but there are no turbines located within 1,200.
I think there's one at 11-
1190.
1190, so, I mean, that is part of the consideration as well.
And the 1190 does include the 200 feet of blade, which-
Yes.
And some laws do go to blade tip even for the side setbacks.
It is difficult to, you know, from, at least from my perspective, to arrive at a setback or to know what kind of setback is appropriate and safe, and various resources or, you know, suppose experts that you look to can say different things, anything between one, one and a half times to two and a half times, but I do think it's helpful to look at local, you know, local precedent and with the turbines that were recently put up in Arcrite with the 492-foot, you know, approximately 492 feet tall with a 1,200-foot setback from a resident. So it is difficult to look at the 599 and the 1,000 feet and say that that may be a safe or appropriate setback. So I think between, I mean, it obviously depends on what happens this evening, but I think some more clarification on that determination of a setback could help.
Same, Arthur.
I think, you know, I've said what I can on that.
And you could rule and make, you know, a comment that that's one thing you want the board to spend extra time on and be comfortable with themselves, that the area you see is a prime need to be looked at specifically carefully. I don't know if that would come forward or not.
Well, I would like to, you know, see a table of this proposal, you know, to give me personally a chance to go out and ride the area, and then also to remember the economic impact of why we voted yes, you know, two years ago. I'm not remembering that, but I do remember it was significant to the schools and the localities, so I would like to make a motion to table this request.
I'll second that.
Okay, can I add just one thing to the motion?
Sure.
That we request the two communities to give us 30 days for the review.
Ask for 30-day, right. What's the date of our next meeting? Just to make sure.
Be the first Wednesday of August.
Yeah, but it could be 33 days or whatever, just make sure it's-
We might call it special.
There's no meeting scheduled for August.
We need to make sure we're within all 30.
I think it was scheduled as a recess.
It was scheduled as a recess, so we would-
It's okay, I just want to make sure the 30 days, we didn't have to be a 31 or something. It sounds like it would be a special meeting.
Yeah.
An object to that, I just want to make sure we weren't studding our tone.
Okay, the motion has been made that we table this issue and request the communities to allow us 30 days to further review.
And could we tell them also specifically what we're asking?
Do we want to-
Trying to tag on too much, but during those 30 days, we're going to make clear, I think, what we're asking for so that we, you know, can become more informed, so we can make a better decision 30 days.
Scientific basis for the setbacks.
I'm going to go grab my notebook, I'm not turning my back on you.
Okay, sure.
Is there something that I would like to- I ask for information on the runway?
Just hold on, please. Add scientific basis for the setbacks. I would like an opinion on the segmentation issue. I know it doesn't fit the strict parameters of segmentation, however, project was approved and now we're asking for a change after the project was approved.
That's correct. I will follow up with you, but our opinion, I think, is fairly straightforward, that this does not fall into the parameters of segmentation. I think we're fairly comfortable with that.
There was a third question.
Well, I know on this side of the table, we're concerned about the 2018, you know, economics to the municipalities.
The cumulative, yeah, cumulative impact-
Of not receiving the funding? Pardon? Does that relate to the host community?
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, the cumulative impact of the increased height that they're requesting with the bird and bat kills from, you know, this project being taller and, you know, cumulative with the other two potential, two projects, the Arcrite that's about completed and the potential for the Casadega.
I think to tag on a little bit with that cumulative impact of what Chairman Bowen just said is, I think the assurance that we would like from the Blurb perspective is, clarifying, would be a good hard look at the cumulative impact of multiple environmental projects.
Mr. Tim?
Yes.
In answer to the question about economic benefits, I mean, this is a summary, but if I could just offer this in record, this summarizes the public economic benefits, if you will, the host community benefits and the pilot as well as the landowner payments.
Does that include the 60% increase with the hire or are these the old numbers? I realize for the host community it's the same.
Yeah, these are, these, I believe, are updated for the expected energy output of the new, so it's approximately $1.1 million a year to the towns of Hanover and Villanova.
So there's a motion. There's a motion. Do we want to set the meeting date at this time?
Should we make a, take a second on the motion?
We have a second.
We do, okay. Well, we can do this motion.
I'm a little bit wary about setting the date for the meeting, only because-
We don't know if they'll approve.
We don't know whether they'll approve the 30 days, and we will assume that you will communicate to us quickly whether the towns will approve.
Well, I assume I'll just set this evening.
Okay. Okay, motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion? We've got the points that we want addressed, listed. Roll call vote, please.
John? I agree with table in that with those-
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion has been carried. Okay, planning board has tabled their decision on the zoning change for the height increase allowable for the wind turbines at this time.
I do have one practical question. Somebody may know the answer, but how exactly and to whom do we get back to?
Don.
I mean, I'm not saying town doesn't have it, but I do know it. Thank you.
Can give you my phone as well.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for coming on our topics. We are not quite done yet.
The planning board asked County Executive George Borello for his comment on the RES proposal.
... caused Chautauqua County and Western New York in general. You know, we built tenant housing on our water fronts, we built super high ways, we separated our communities from the water fronts and from other areas, and we did it because we thought it was supposed to serve the greater good. Well, I don't see this stuff serving the greater good 40 or 50 years later, and I think if we turn the clock ahead a decade or two or three, we're going to look back at this so-called green energy era, and we're going to see this as the urban renewal of our century and of our generation, and they're going to look back at these things after they're spent and after the companies have built them, they're long out of business, and the people who made money are long gone, and we're going to be the ones that are going to deal with. And the bottom line is, these things are not renewable, they're not green, they're nothing that they claim to be. You know, we just announced today that energy is not going to be power. Part of the reason not going to be power is because of the huge interconnect costs that are being thrust upon them because of projects like these, because they have to be, because their power is intermittent and unreliable and low efficiency, it has to be connected to reliable power. Well, who don't have reliable power in Chautauqua County were because our Dunkirk plan has been closed, so they're running transmission lines to the dirtiest old-fashioned coal plants in the United States, like Homer City, Pennsylvania, to back up the so-called green energy. That's not going to be, folks, we're going to increase our carbon footprint for these things, and we're going to do so because we're going to be, because we're subscribed to this bogus plan that our governor thinks is going to create this shangri-la, where you can tell people that New York State is running 50% of its electricity from green energy by year 2030. First of all, it's not going to happen unless they blanket all of state New York with wind power, wind turbines and solar panels. Secondly, it's not going to happen without having increasing the coal, these dirty coal plants in Pennsylvania increasing their capacity so they can, so they can belch pollution in the air, so the government can feel better about itself. And I don't like it, I think everybody knows I don't like it, the economics don't work out, it's going to damage our property values, it's going to reduce the quality life of the people that are here, and it's just, it doesn't make any sense, okay? We're going to do what we did 40, 50 years ago, we're going to take the money from the federal government, and we're going to tell ourselves that we're doing it for the greater good of the people, and we're going to turn the clock ahead in 20 years, and we're going to see how much it's damaged our community, and I don't want to see it happen again. So that's why I'm against it. That's my opinion.